Good evening and welcome to a regular monthly council meeting. We're glad to have everyone here tonight. Hope everyone is having a good summer so far. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order and we have Reverend John Jackson tonight to give our indication. John, thank you for coming.
Father, we realize this afternoon you're Elohim. You're the owner and possession of the heaven and the earth. And Father, after you created everything, then you said, "Let us make man." And you made man in your image, Lord. And Father, even the fallen into God and the rising of your Son and dying on the cross, that give us a right to stand this evening to call on a holy and righteous God. Father, I pray this evening that every decision that is made this evening, Father, will be made to glorify your name, Father, in the mighty name of Jesus. Because every decision that's made this evening will affect all of our life. And Father, I thank you again for this opportunity to be able to come and pray here at the city management conference this evening, Father. And oh God, we just have to give you praise and glory because if it had not been for you that was on our side, what would we be this evening? Father, we thank you for how far you have brought us up until this present time. And God, I just want to pray for the things that have took place in Florida this afternoon. I pray for those families, Lord, that have lost loved ones, Lord, in the mighty name of Jesus. And again, Father, I pray that as this meeting begins to start this evening, that they make the decision for this Hamlet, North Carolina, that the decision will be made that will affect us in a positive way for this reaction in the powerful name of Jesus. And in Jesus' precious name, I pray that the name of the Lord say, "Amen."
Amen. Thank you, sir. Item number three is adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Have a motion to adopt.
Second.
Any further changes, additions, deletions, et cetera? If not, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number four is adoption of minutes. You have had before you and signed them the closed session minutes of March 4th, March 8th, and May 10th of 2016. Also before you, you have the regular sessions from March 8th, special session on March 24th, special session on April 12th, and the budget session on May 26th. I call for a motion to adopt those.
Mayor, before I make a motion, has everybody had a chance to read that? Make a motion to approve?
Got a motion to approve? Got a second? Any further changes or additions? If not, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. At this time, we move along to item five, which is comments from attendees. If we have anyone here tonight that wants to speak on something that is not on the agenda, please come forward at this time. We're certainly be glad to hear you. We didn't have anyone who could ask. If not, we'll close the comments from attendees. At this time, city manager, we have item number six, personnel recognition.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to introduce our new IT coordinator. Can you hear me good? Good. Gerald Adams is in the back. He's managing our sound and we have our old IT coordinator helping train Gerald tonight on how to use our current equipment. But Gerald Adams has been an employee for roughly a year and a half. He's coming from our water department, water treatment plant that is. He has a two-year degree in information technology and he's worked for a community college and two other companies as an IT coordinator. And he's really doing some great work for us. He's got a lot of new ideas and he's taken off where Zach Garner left off. So I wanted to recognize him and also wanted to recognize Stephanie Thornsberry, a Hamlet native. She is our new museum manager and downtown coordinator and I'm really excited to have her. She is coming from the Discovery Place Kids in Rockingham and I'm really excited to work with her and utilize her skills to promote our downtown and to improve our depot. Stephanie, would you like to speak?
Do I come here? Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm really, really excited. I'm excited to be a part of growing the community that I know and I'm really excited to get started and do lots of different activities and programs and things with the museum itself, too. That's all I got.
Thank you. We're so glad to have you with us. And Gerald, we're glad to have you in IT. Thank you so much.
And so far, they've done really great things since they've been here already.
Both of those folks are very humble and soft-spoken, but they're very passionate about what they do and I'm really excited to see them grow for years to come. That's all that I have, but I think that Mr. Wa-
I've got a note here that says that Fire Chief has an appointment he would like to recognize.
Everybody, this is one of our, this is our newest hire. He is Daniel Asbill and today is his birthday.
Happy birthday.
He's 25 years old. He's from Carthage. He's firefighting EMT and he's been with the department since April the 28th. He's learned a lot and he's got a lot to learn, so.
We're certainly glad to have you with us.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief. Look forward to seeing you around. All right. This time, we'll move along to item number seven and we're pleased to have with us tonight Mr. Tommy Overby of the North Carolina Environmental Quality Water Resources. You'll come up, Tommy. Thank you so much. And get Mr. Brown up there with you.
Thank you for letting me be here tonight. The reason I'm here is the area-wide optimization program, or AWAP as we call it. It's a program where we ask our water treatment plants to try to make more stringent turbidity standards of instead of point three, a point one turbidity. And the law line is Robert and his staff has achieved that for the fifth straight year in 2015.
Robert, we thank you for what you and your folks do down there. If you didn't do what you do, we would not get these kind of awards for our-
These are the times we like to see when our plants do good things. I like Robert, don't like to see NOVs and everything like that. That's why we try to stay at all and they're doing excellent job.
Thank you so much.
Home away women to do another one tomorrow.
Okay. Robert, did you want to give a speech? Oh, okay.
You didn't want to tell us about it all?
Okay. Also, I'd just like to recognize Melanie Florn, who is back with us from the newspaper and we're certainly glad to have you coming into our meeting. Have you back. Next item of business is item number eight under old business and this is a discussion of possible changes to the subdivision ordinance we've been working on and I believe our attorney was, wanted to make some comments tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This should be just a short item. It's really just to flag some things that I saw when I was going through the draft ordinance. Happy to answer any questions you have tonight, but really it's kind of a, think about it, maybe changes you want to make in the future. I just very quickly want to go over these. They were on the third page of the memo that I had sent to Marcus and Gail for the meeting last month and it's in your agenda packet. And the five suggestions I want you all to consider, the first one is, does Hamlet need to adopt what's called a unified development ordinance? Right now, Hamlet has a separate zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, may have some other things like floodplain administration. A lot of jurisdictions have gone to having it just in a single document. What that does, it helps prevent having conflicting standards. If you're an applicant, a developer who wants to come to Hamlet, it's a lot more user-friendly. Also, staff typically find it's easier to use and amend, so there is a downside that there is some cost in putting that kind of document together, but I think jurisdictions that have it generally like their UDOs. So that's one thing to consider. Second thing to consider, I know that you all have not had a lot of subdivision plat requests come to Hamlet in recent years, at least not in the time I've been here. But some jurisdictions really want, the council wants to exercise control over plat approval. They want to be able to put conditions on it and make sure that it's something that they feel good about. And one way you can do that is by requiring a special use permit as part of plat approval and that would come before you. And so you'd have final say over that. Otherwise, right now, as the ordinance is written, that's done at the staff level. There's nothing wrong with that, but I know in some jurisdictions I've been in, staff approves it, they're doing their job, and then council's not happy. It's not that the staff did, it's just everybody's hands were kind of tied. The downside is that raises costs and time for a developer. So you may say, "That's not a trade-off we want to make." Third question, a lot of towns want to see sidewalks on all or most streets in their new subdivisions. Your current standards do not require that. Again, that's a cost issue. You may say, "That's not something we want to, a barrier we would have put on a developer coming into Hamlet," but it's something I've seen in a lot of communities, so I thought I'd flag it for you all. Number four, in some circumstances, towns will allow swales, you know, the little vegetated ditches instead of curb and gutter. I've seen communities think that that is a step back and it doesn't look as nice and it's not as long-term. They feel like it doesn't last as well. Others really feel like it's more environmentally friendly and it's a less expensive way to do development. So don't have an opinion on it, but something to think about. Last one, your current ordinance does not allow a developer that comes in to pay in lieu fees for the required open space. So right now, they have to have a certain amount of open space as part of a development. The statutes allow you to accept fees in lieu of that. And what you do is if our ordinance had that provision, you could take fees and then you could put it toward a, say, a citywide park or some other kind of recreational facility. Can't just go in the general fund and be used for whatever. It has to be used for something of like value. But I actually really do recommend we adopt something like that because particularly when a small subdivision comes in, the open space requirement may be so small that it's really not practical or useful. Instead then, they can pay some money and it can always be at the option of city council. So that's the only one I recommend that you, you look at doing. And the others, I'm happy to answer questions about, but I wanted to flag those as we now have a subdivision ordinance. So by the way, congratulations.
What questions do you have, council?
No questions at all is perfectly fine, too.
You know, in all seriousness, we have depended on you and do depend on you to come up with the right answers on this. We'll go, you know, we look at it and see if everything looks well. But so far, the things that you've recommended, I think have been good and I look forward to it just all together.
Are we deciding on these questions?
No, sir. These are just food for thought. Again, it's something to think about and you may want to wait and have a subdivision or two and say, "I like this, I didn't like that." And the only recommendation I have is that, that number five, the in lieu fees, which is not a hard ordinance amendment to make. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I did want to say about that is a lot of the credit needs to go to staff, particularly Gail and Marcus.
Right.
They pulled the document together.
Well, if you, did you have anything that you want to go over this before we discuss it again?
I didn't know if we were voting. I mean, we've got an issue there on three and four that-
Okay.
-you have to decide on them.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Is there, um...
I believe you've got swale out in your neighborhood that he's talking about.
And I think that looks fine.
Yeah. And cost-wise, it would be cheaper than-
It looks, I think it looks very nice.
Is this something we may want to, let's table till we can sit down and discuss it kind of in more detail?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table this till we can get together and discuss it in more detail.
I get, and that's fine, yeah. I guess one of the things that gets me worse than anything else is making sure that they pave the streets and give adequate right-of-way.
Yeah.
Get away with that's-
Because you've got some ideas in here we probably need to make a decision on and I think to sit here and hash it out would take-
Yeah.
And to that, Mr. Mayor, per Tim, this is really not a, you need to discuss it tonight, but here are some things to think about.
Awesome. Yeah, that, because it makes a lot of sense and I appreciate your point.
Or court session before a meeting some night.
Yeah. That'd be good.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea, to have an early meeting, just discuss these issues.
So I'll make a motion to table this until our next council meeting where we can meet prior to-
Didn't have anything official on it. He just brought it up to tell us about it. So we were not going to do anything, we were not going to do anything official anyway.
Still on business.
We're just going to table it and just hold off then.
All we need is consensus on that.
All right. Next council meeting?
It's a pleasure to the board, Tim.
Okay. Very good.
Next council meeting. Prior to the court session, the board or?
Yeah, try to get, we can come in a little bit early just to go over that stuff if that's convenient with everybody. We'll work it out over the next while, as long as we've got enough time to let the newspaper know about it. Okay. Next item of business is new business, item number nine. And at this time, I'll be opening a public hearing on the proposed 2016-2017 budget ordinance. I'm going to let the manager go over just the high spots in it. Did he want to be called now or did he want to be called when we get to the next section of the vote?
Mr. Mayor, you could wait until the public hearing is over.
That's what I thought.
After the budget message which was delivered in May. I don't really have any further comments other than we added a couple additional items since then and I'm really excited to see next year's budget unfold.
Okay. Very good. Council, any of you have comments on the budget?
Are we able to address individual items? I'm new at this.
You can if you want to.
Well, in discussions with Marcus, I'm concerned our reevaluations for the new tax base is only 1%. That was their estimate. We still don't know which amounts to about $30,000 that will be an increase, is what the figures you gave me several months ago. I know it's still not standard, which is kind of the way I look at it, is the cities' raise on their property tax over the next eight years. Basically, a good definition of that.
Well, the property tax values are reevaluated every eight years, at least every eight years by statute. They're reevaluated by the county. You could look at it that way. Staff looks at it from the standpoint that we're just now catching up to 2016 values and prior to this revaluation, we had values that were looked at back in 2008. And if property tax, if the property tax rate was lowered by, say, a penny to balance that, that still would not mean that everyone's property taxes would stay the same because every individual property owner, their value fluctuates. You know, if someone who puts money into his or her property, their value is going to decrease, but maybe a home that may have caught fire or maybe a house was removed from a structure, that value would decrease. So it will fluctuate, but the revenue neutral, the revenue neutral rate was roughly one penny lower than the current property tax rate. Could that answer your question?
But if we left with the reevaluation that you had told me was the new, we were only going to come up with a $30,000-
That would be correct. Yes, sir.
Amount. So our budget's not going to go up for the next eight years. The money coming in from taxes is only going to go up about $30,000.
That would be correct.
Yeah, that's what's projected.
For the next eight years. So it's a very small amount, very minor amount. I like how they did the budget this past year. They were very conservative. They watched how they spent it and came back at midterm, we'll call it, and reassessed. The staff did an excellent job. We had better sales tax. So I, and we're able to address issues and spend the surplus that we had in a timely manner instead of folding it back into this budget. Where I guess I'm trying to get at is, there's several, a few items that I think that I'd like to have removed. And there's very little, I was amazed at going through the line items, how little flexibility there is in the budget. Everything is, the salaries and upkeep and there's just minor things in here that could be removed or changed. One was the paving at the senior center. I went down there myself. There's one parking place that really is bad. This was a $19,000 bill to patch and pave. And our guys have some paving equipment. If we went down there and addressed that one issue, maybe that, we could put that off for a few more years. It's $19,000 that could be spent. Maybe in another place. Again, it was one parking place all the way down at the end of the, towards the store.
And you and I talked about this, but I thought that's what we had talked about doing was not doing a complete, I guess, cover-up.
Yeah.
I thought, we talked about a couple of options, but I thought we had gotten down to the point of we're going to fix that spot.
In a prior budget work session, we had talked about repaving the entire parking lot, which was $38,000 and some change. And we had collected an estimate to patch the lot and the-
That was the whole lot?
Yeah. Yep.
Or-
As opposed to, I guess, the worst pot, pothole. But I, it was my understanding that we wanted to go with the second option, which was roughly $19,000 or-
That's the whole parking lot.
-that's what the conservative estimate was.
That's the whole parking lot then, right?
Yes.
Patching, patching, the whole parking.
Yeah. Whereas I'm kind of like, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, we'll go down the line, but I'm kind of in agreeance that the parking lot as a whole was not, it's not horrible. It was that one area of concern that was kind of roughed up that we needed to fix so that it's not a tripping issue.
Let me just say this about, you know, the budget is a work in progress and whatever we pass here is just a guideline for the city to go. If we have issues in there where we don't want to spend money or we decide not to do it, we can, we can do that. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be spent.
But if we pass something tonight and he calls them up and patches it?
It does if, unless the council tells him no, but you know, right now, if we amend this budget, we're not going to be able to get past the first of July. It's got to be passed. We can't go past the first of July.
David, Councilman Lindsay is absolutely right. The budget and the budget message, the budget message has to be presented prior to June 1st. I presented that at the May council meeting. And then, once the budget is presented, it must sit for 10 days. And once it sits for 10 days, then it belongs to the council and the council can raise or lower taxes, they could add or remove programs or make additional actions, which like what we did at the budget work session on May 26th. But from this point forward, any changes don't have to sit for any period of time and it can be approved however way you like it at this time.
Even if you just say, "Hold off," just leave it in there, it just to readdress the issue at a later time. I don't have a problem with the money staying, but are all of us going to look at the issue and see how we feel if it's handled?
Yeah, I understand that.
I thought at the last budget meeting, again, I knew it, I thought we were going to go a little more line item than agenda item in the last budget meeting. Again, this is new to me, first time I ever been through it, so-
No, no, that's fine. No, you're fine. Yeah, you're fine.
And my wife will tell you, I'm cheap. I'm trying to watch every, every spot.
Is this something maybe, maybe we could look at doing kind of some of the equipment we did this past year where we could say, "Let's put it in the, go ahead and fix the problem, the small area, but then put it to the side until-"
And see how it lasts. Maybe, maybe that patch will hold. We come back in, in, after the first of the year-
Mid.
And leave it in there and not let Jill write a check for it or something. And then we readdress it, see how I patched it.
As a management directive, if that's what you would prefer to do, you could, you could approve the budget in that particular project. I could hold off until January 1st and we-
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to-
No, no, no. Yeah, that's fine.
I have no problem with doing that. I mean, there's only a certain amount that we can do starting in July anyway, so it'd be good to wait until January to look, you know, reevaluate that.
Okay. Y'all want to put that, do you want to put that as a motion to suspend that project?
I just think that'd be a good idea.
Sir?
I don't, I don't know how we're aiming to do it.
What's your heading?
The only problem I see with just suspending or patching, it's not just the patching job that we've got to look at, it's the people that's using the lot down there. They own walkers, trusses, tripping, you know, sort of, staying on feet. We need a, we need a nice parking lot down there for them to come across and walk on. Patching's all right, but in this case, we're talking about the elderly down there with walkers, walkers, trusses.
The only, the only problem was, was one parking spot at the other end.
One bad spot, but it altered the lot. Needs repair, to be true.
It's that rough gravel type lot which is, which can be an issue, but-
What was the patching? Did he say what the patching was going to be, Billy?
The, the patching was, you mean the $19,000?
If we did, yeah. What was that going to be like? I mean, is it, um, is that a lot more smooth or is it going to kind of be still rough?
I think Benny, I think Nikki may have reached out to Benny and he got some preliminary quotes. And again, these are rough estimates for budgetary purposes. A lot of times, once a budget is passed, we then come back six, eight months later. I mean, sometimes in a six-month, eight-time period, the cost of goods or services could go up or go down depending on a variety of things. So, you know, additional quotes would be collected to perform the project. And if this is one that the council wants to hold off on, I'm totally fine with, you know, just waiting until January. Put the money in there and we wait until January. If we, if we spend $7,000 on the project out of 19, then we're fine. We just don't want to under-budget. We don't want to plan to spend $10,000 and then we spend 13, you know.
I guess, I guess that brings to mind to me, you talk about $19,000 to go down and patch it, that's almost like going back to the old saying, "Are we putting lipstick on a pig?" In other words, are we going to spend $19,000 and waste it? I mean, what really needs to be done down there? I agree with you.
At least readdress it and we all go look at it and see what the difference is in the two, because you have, it's twice as expensive to give a total paving job that's going to last longer, probably better to-
Because we patched the 19K and then we turn around in a year and a half and it's busted all up and, I really thought we were going to fix the spot that's bad and then, but I mean, we, you know, it's not a big deal.
They're just going to overspray it. I mean, fix the holes and, I know they came in and we had somebody spray the thing and that's a, that's a two-year, three-year and it wears off and, I mean, you know, so I don't, I don't know what we're getting for the 19. I guess we need to-
And we, again, we can hold off until January, reevaluate that at the mid-year, leave that in the budget. We won't spend it until January.
That's why, I think we get a consensus on that.
Get a closer look at what we want to do and come back to you.
Just look at it a little harder and find out.
And I apologize, but we kind of both were on the same thought that we weren't going to spend that and that's not anybody's fault. I mean, that's just part of going through a lot of information and-
A ton, yeah.
Yeah. It can be, so no issue there.
What else do you have, Dave?
Another small, the side grant, you've gone up to $10,000. We didn't have that many people to apply for, I don't know of, and I don't know. Leave it at five and put five. We got, I know two buildings right off that we have, that are owned by the city that have roof leaks and I think there's a third unless they fix the fire department. they fix the fire department. And instead of somebody helping us, we fix up somebody else.
We got a leak over there again, Calvin.
But we're leaking at the concession stand at the, at the American Legion and the rec offices are leaking. And I'd rather see the $5,000 go fixing our own building.
Yeah, we probably need to amend that then, so we get those roofs fixed.
It'd still be at the same dollar value that we had this past year and we had a few people that applied for it, but I don't, did you spend all your $5,000?
We did, and $5,000 will cover maybe two small projects and one medium sized project. Some towns budget 25 or even 30 or $40,000 for a facade grant program. And I think you may remember this from either the January session or the budget retreat, I talked about wanting to increase the program so we could advertise, put out more brochures, get some more participation. This first year was kind of like a trial period to see how it would go. I do think that there is interest, and I do think that it does help with revitalizing our downtown, but if you prefer to keep it at $5,000, every little bit helps, you know, so.
I think the, the point is, is-
I see Stephanie bobbing her head back there.
It's, it's a, it's a good thing to do because you're benefiting the downtown Hamlet area, but like Councilman Lindsay said, we got some areas of our own we need to fix right now. And if we're having to amend the budget to fix that, plus we're increasing to $10,000, we'd be better off to take additional five and put it towards our own budget for now.
If we get more people that want the facade grants and go back and address them at each one individually.
That's a good idea. That's what I was thinking at the same time.
Last but not least, pay raises for employees. I know I won't be a very popular person. I'm all in favor of a step increase. We're paying $300 extra per person for health insurance. We gave an extra day of holiday, Christmas, for the amount for one per year for, I believe it was going to be three years, I believe by the calendar. And we owe about $175,000 roughly, I believe, to what Jamie Marcus backed holiday pay to our firemen and police officers that was not paid out in the appropriate manner. Would that be a politically correct way to say that? That's a lot of money owed. I'm, I'd like to remove the COLA and readdress it at a later date. We'd still be giving them a 2.5% raise. And no increase in insurance, they don't pay anything for insurance.
And the longevity.
And, and we gave a longevity bonus that was every three years for each section, and now we're giving it to every group every year. So there's, there, there, again, I'm not going to be looked at, but I just feel like I'd like, that's a hun, that's 50 odd thousand dollars that we could, if nothing else, we could pay down this back holiday pay that we owe, start working on it and then readdress salaries. I don't know how you handle that. I don't know how the rest of them feel.
You want to sum up what he's trying to say of how we're reaching the entire 5%?
Reaching the entire 5%.
You got a 1.5% COLA, then you got the longevity, and then you got the step up, which is what?
Two and a half.
Two and a half percent.
And you got $300 per person. So 30, $28,000 of increase in overall insurance, you know, costs. And, you know, trying to look for places a little bit, I know I'm not going to be a popular person, but still a 2.5% raise. The national COLA this year was zero.
Actually, it'd be, because the COLA was only 1.5, right? We were doing a total five.
Right. It's just a partial reduction that you have a nice factor. I don't, again, I don't know how the rest of the council, I know this is not the right way to handle it, I guess.
Yeah.
In the recommended budget, as we've talked about in prior meetings, the recommended budget includes a 1.5% COLA. I came up with, with that based off of a very simple salary study that I, that staff conducted several months ago, and we found that a lot of our salaries are a little bit lower than some of our nearest neighbors. So I recommended 1.5% because I thought that that would be a good amount that would get us closer to the market rate for our neighbors. I think that Richmond County is doing a 3% COLA this year, and I think that Rockingham is doing a 2, 2 or 2.5% COLA this year.
Can I pause you real quick?
Yes, sir.
Now, they're doing, what's their total increase overall? Because we're doing, we're doing, we're talking about doing a COLA, we're talking about longevity.
Everybody's not getting a merit increase, are they?
The county in Rockingham should be conducting, sorry, what?
Us. Everybody will not be getting a merit increase, will they?
A merit increase comes and, in the recommended budget, is 2.5% on average for merit increases. And that's supposed to come one year following an employee's, or, excuse me, you know, one year following an employee's initial employment upon a performance review. A performance evaluation is conducted after a certain period of time with the city, and that employee is eligible for a merit raise. That doesn't mean that everyone will get one. It's, it's supposed to be based on performance, how that employee performs his or her job. And if they are performing above the expectations of the supervisor, then they're eligible for a raise. And that's what that's for. The cost of living adjustment is supposed to raise the, the minimum as well as the max, the entire salary schedule of our employees. And it's supposed to keep up with inflation as well as keep up with our, what our nearest neighbors are paying their employees. And the merit is supposed to award a raise to employees after a performance review, and that's supposed to be based on their performance.
Have all these reviews been done?
This fiscal year, we started a performance evaluation system. I'm evaluating my employees and I'm instructing our employees to evaluate their employees because that's going to be the only way that they get a merit increase.
This amount is, would be based on every person getting a merit raise.
And if they all got it on July 1st, it's going to come one year following their, their employment with the city. So some would be up for a performance review in September, and some would be up for a performance review in March, and some would be up for a performance review in April. But the most conservative way to estimate is just calculate what it would cost if we were to conduct it on July 1. That way, we plan to spend way more than we actually will.
I guess my, my biggest concern is, is we're talking about the 1% towards the increase on the value of the house, the home. We're doing the 2.5% merit, which I'm pretty sure that at least 96%, 97% of our people will probably get one. And then we're doing the COLA, so we're talking 5%. And then what worries me is, is next year, because of the small amount of revenue, we're not going to be able to give anything. And I see the benefit where I'd like a 5% increase in pay today, but I would rather have a 2, a 2, a 1, or, you know, something that stretches out rather than us coming short next year and we can't do anything. Because we, we never know where we're going to fall. And I completely agree, we've all said we agree that we need to be kind of in comparison to, to neighboring towns, but at the same time, we do not have the tax base or the revenue that Rockingham has. We, we can't, we just can't beat them. We never will, until we get the businesses to do it. And I, I mean, while I'm for, definitely for increasing pay to all our employees, it worries me that we will not be able to do anything next year.
Is, is your budget based on, you said, I know you told me we had a really good year for sales tax, is that it? Is it based on another anticipated good year or is it based on?
As worded in my budget message, yeah, I've tried to estimate revenues more accurately to what actual amounts will be. So I'm, I'm trying to eliminate quite a spread or a difference between budgeted revenues and estimated revenues.
Again, I'm learning, I know you commented this year was an extremely good year, that's why we had the couple hundred thousand dollar surplus. And again, I'm, I'm just sort of trying to put this, or move it to the back burner and readdress it again, six months down the road, and say, you know, hey, we're having another good year, the taxes are coming in, we're looking good, we're saving money, let's give them a bonus at Christmas or give them the 1.5%. We're just getting ready to lock ourselves into over $200,000 in additional salary. And the way you're telling me that we're going to get $30,000 extra in property tax. We're having to cut something, $170,000 worth. And I, our employees, I love them, but we got to watch the pendulum, that's all.
Especially we're talking about roofs, we're talking about air conditioning at the depot, and there's several other things that we're going to have to be looking at. And it's just, I'm not saying take it, I'm like, you know, I'm like, David, is we got to look at it as we did last year. We did a really great budget, and we come in excellent, and we were able to buy and do additional things mid-year. I would rather be able to do something mid-year like the COLA, where we know that we're pretty safe, we're in a good position to do it. So the employees will still get their, their merit raise and an increase in pay, but the COLA's kind of, let's see where we're at. I'm just my own person talking here, but.
Mr. Martin, you have comments?
Well, nothing other than I thought we already discussed and voted on it and decided that's what we would do. We got to stay somewhat competitive with the towns surrounding us. Richmond County's giving three, Rockingham's giving two, we'll at least give one and a half if we can.
Well, we are giving two and a half in a COLA.
I'm just not in favor of cutting.
Well, this is, you know, this has already been voted on one time.
Um, yeah, I was kind of caught up in the middle of trying to talk about it when that was voted on. Marcus, on that, you said Rockingham's given what increase to their employees?
Two.
Two. What else have they given?
They, they have a longevity plan that we just, we just added to kind of mirror of Rockingham's program. They also have merit raises, like what we're trying to do.
Do we have any estimate on what the longevity, since we changed it and gave it every year? I've never seen a figure on what this new longevity pay, bonus or whatever we call it.
The spreadsheet that we looked at had the four or five options that we had, and it had the cost of each option, and I can bring that on the screen again if you would like.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not trying to take it out, just trying to say I think it's something that we could possibly look at whenever we know we're in a safe place. To me, and I would hope the employees would agree, that I would rather get a pay raise this year and next year and the year after than to get this increase now, and then for the next two years, you get nothing.
Well, if you, just might make a point here real quick, you keep saying that, but if you cut it this year, that doesn't mean you're going to have, that's not going to give you money next year to do it again. What we're spending is this year's money.
You don't know where you're going to be next year either.
Well, that's a fact. And if you don't, can't do anything next year, we just can't. We've had years we couldn't do anything.
The cost of the longevity plan that you chose was 36,000.
Thirty.
For all the brackets?
Yes, sir.
And that'll be here.
Yes, sir.
So now we're up to 200, because we raised the, we raised the police department to a level, every person stepped up.
We need to get him on mine.
You're going to go ahead and do it? That's, that's a number to hear.
Yeah.
Is he going to call?
Counsel, if I may, you still need to conduct, conduct the public hearing, and once the public hearing is through, then you can vote on the budget ordinance or table it, and we could have another meeting on it.
The mayor had not had an opportunity to open the hearing.
Yes, I did. Hearing's open. Yes, we're in the hearing.
Yeah, because he asked and anybody didn't.
I know, that's why, we're already in the hearing. We have been in here for a while, sir, thank you. Thank you.
That's all I got.
I have a question for the budget. Is there anything figured in there? My understanding is that there's an air conditioning issue at the depot.
One of the air conditioning units down at the depot is having some trouble and it needs to be fixed. However, it's more money than we have in our budget, and with it being so close to July 1, we're waiting until July 1, and we're fixing it then. That's what we're trying to do.
What's wrong with it? Did you hit the lightning?
I, I think that one of the HVACs has gone down. I, it's, it's been a few weeks, and Doc told me in detail, but every single day I have, you know, 14-
Is it repairable or is it going to have to be replaced?
There, it's a major repair. I want to say in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $12,000. And we're waiting until July 1 because it's, it's a heavy expense.
So 10,000 to 12,000 on an air conditioner. And then how many roofs we got leaking?
Is this the whole section of the depot out?
Three roofs.
You have a tenant in there. I know, at least one, if not two.
I think it affects, I think that it affects Kim Ruas, the realtor, and one other, one other room. All the other rooms work.
Kind of hot going out there.
Um, let me ask you, so, so are there complaints going on down there right now because of the conditions?
I just spoke with Kim Ruas today. She called today and we spoke. And I let her know that we're, we're trying to fix it as quickly as possible, and I let her know that, you know, what the situation was, that-
As quickly as possible after July?
Yes, sir.
And it's 90 something degrees outside?
And she's paying rent? Is the other person, is there somebody in the other room paying rent, or is she the only one paying rent?
No, there's, there's multiple tenants that pay rent.
And I'm not blaming you.
That are affected with that, that don't have air.
We got to fix that.
Does the chamber have air?
Yes.
Okay. So how many tenants don't have air right now?
Just that one.
Just the one.
How many people's in there, you know?
Three in there.
Sure wouldn't pay my rent this much.
There's four in there? I see Dewey's down there, Kim's down there, Chamber Commerce, and who else?
There's a doctor, isn't there? Isn't there a doctor, psychologist?
The, um, the, the last tenant is a child psychologist and a LCSW social worker.
But they have air also?
As far as I know.
Okay.
Got one off.
Okay.
Is there any way we can accommodate them?
That's, that's what I told Kim. I told Kim, Ms. Ruas, today that I would take a look at this and I'd try to see what we could do. Maybe we could help with some fans or something like that for the next two to three weeks until we can, you know, get it fixed. But, um-
I mean, where do we draw the line at what is emergency?
I guess to make a budget amendment to fix it.
If one of them goes out or you've got roof leaks, where, where do we, where do we say we got to do something?
When I decide to bring it to the council, so, I apologize.
We need to try to look at that, because I mean, we're only in the middle of June, so by the time we wait till July, and then we get a quote, we're still probably talking about a few more days, possibly a week, because we don't know what's wrong with it. You can ask the whole board and get a consensus, but I think we need to try to see if we can get a quote to possibly have to make a budget amendment to do that, if we need to. Because I, I mean, I don't know the conditions down there, and I'd be more than glad if you want to, we'll go check it out tomorrow and see what it's like, because I, I don't know. They may be getting enough air from the other offices that it's not that bad, but we'll check it out. I don't mind doing that.
You might explain what we're doing here.
Yeah, Council McQueen's out of town, and he wanted to be contacted in time for the, for the vote. vote. I'm not...
Hello?
Jesse.
Are we allowing him to vote?
Mr. McQueen? Mr. McQueen? You got me? You there? Yeah, we can hear you, can you hear me? Oh, okay. All right, we're in the hearing, in the discussion right now and there was some discussion over the, over the pay issue and that, and that was just discussed. And there's a couple other issues that came up just discussing repairs that have to be done to the, um, down at the depot if one of the air conditioning units has gone out. And there's three offices that have some repair work that needs to be done on the roof. But that was the things that came up and we're getting ready now to close the public hearing and I want to see if you had any comments on it. You still there? Hello? Yeah, I can hear you now. Could you, could you hear him what I told you a minute ago?
Uh, something about an issue with the depot and...
Yeah, but there's, yeah, there's an air conditioner, there's an air conditioner down there south that's gotta be repaired. Looks like it's gonna run ten, twelve thousand dollars. And anyway, we're in the hearing right now, we're getting ready to finish it up and a couple of the issues were brought up. There was some discussion about pay issue and what was the other thing?
The roofs.
Yeah. But anyway, do you have any comments at all on the, on the budget itself?
I mean, I just, everything that was brought up and I don't have any other specific...
Okay, well, hold on just a minute then. Does anyone else have in the audience or anyone else have comments they want to make this time? Anyone? Okay.
Well, Jesse would need to know what the issue is that we're discussing. No, he's, he's accepting, he's thinking that we're talking about the...
We're getting ready, that's all he wanted, he wants to vote on the budget and that'll be the...
Yeah, but he don't know what...
He didn't know what we just brought up. I, I'm totally against this, I'm sorry. He, he just talked about issues.
He don't know that we, what the issues are that David brought up about the, the pay increase for employees and...
Uh, paving at the senior center.
Yeah, yeah, and anyway, we discussed the...
Facade grant.
Yeah. So...
He just said he agreed with everything we just discussed.
Well, his point was, his point is that he just agrees with the budget as it is. Am I okay in this or am I out of line?
You're fine, Mr. Mayor, and as I discussed with some of you before the meeting, it's at the pleasure of the council whether you want to allow a member to participate by phone. I know Mr. Lindsey's expressed some concerns about that, maybe some other folks have. But my position is unless the council says that you cannot participate by phone, then you can. So that's really the pleasure of the board.
Uh, attorney's talking right now. So, uh, I have, you know, if he wants to vote on it, on as it is without any changes, that's...
Jesse, um, are you wanting to vote on the budget as it is or do you want to hear the changes that have been discussed and made?
What were the changes?
The senior center parking lot that was for nineteen thousand dollars, we discussed on putting that off until mid-year. Um, and fix, fixing what we can right now until we go mid-year and see what it looks like. Um, we discussed the facade grant, instead of ten thousand, taking it to five thousand because of some of the repairs we got to make to some of our own buildings. Um, and then the employee raises, we discussed removing the COLA until mid-year. Until, the employee raises, we discussed on holding off till mid-year on that, on the COLA, not the other part, but just the COLA due to all the repairs that's got to be made to the depot and some of the roofs and stuff until we can find out if we even have the money to do that right now. All the other raises stay except for COLA is essentially what we're saying.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm still, I'm still pulling the raise I was talking about.
All right, so that, all right, so what, you're, you're fine with everything else but the raises, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with everything else except that.
All right, let me, at this time, at this time we'll close the public hearing and take up the issue of voting on the budget for fiscal year sixteen, seventeen and I'd ask for a motion.
Now, are you making the, you're asking for the motion for the change with the senior center to hold off till mid-year?
Yeah, um, yeah.
And just as, now, are you asking for the motion to include the employee raises in that where we're removing the COLA or are you keeping it in?
I'm not... Yes.
Well, may I help? Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim is just vote on each of the proposed changes one at a time.
Yeah, hang on, Jesse.
That, that make it a little easier for everybody.
Okay. All right, well, I'll make a motion to the senior center change of the nineteen thousand dollars that we hold off till mid-year, which would be around January, to see what we need to do there. If we can approve to get that done, but for the meantime, it be corrected where the areas are that's bad.
Did you copy that, Jesse? We're gonna vote on each one of those amendments as is. So the first one is...
Yeah.
The first one is ju, is on that patching issue to hold off on. Uh, so we got a motion, need a second? Seven seconds.
Was that motion to hold off on the, on the...
No, no, this is only, this is only for the senior center parking lot right this time.
Okay, so everything still same as with that?
No, we're voting on it individually.
We're gonna vote on each one individually.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, hold on a minute, Jesse.
I know this is one where there have been discussion about leaving the money in the budget, but just directing the manager to hold off on that.
That's right.
Okay, so this one's not being removed from the budget, is that correct?
That's right, not being removed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, it's not being removed from the budget, Jesse, but it's being, um, it's just being put off. All right, so I got a motion, I have a second, have any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jesse?
Is this, is this allowed?
Yeah.
That is removing the COLA rate.
That's right. No, it's not, no, no.
Jesse, only thing we're talking about right now is the senior center parking lot. We're holding off until January.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah.
All right. All right, you're for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're good there. Now, the next thing that's coming up is what?
Facade grant.
Oh, the facade grant, just changing it from ten thousand to five thousand.
I make a motion to reduce the facade grant from ten thousand to five thousand dollars.
I got a motion?
Second.
Okay, I need, Jesse seconded that one. Any further comment on that this time? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay, taken care of that. All right. Okay, what do we have next?
Uh, the employee raises, just reducing the, I, I'm not making the motion to take it out, I'm making the motion to hold off until mid-year.
All these would be leaving the money in?
Everything stays, everything stays as is, with the exception of moving the COLA to mid-year.
Put, put a hole on.
Did you copy that, Jesse?
That's the motion.
Okay, just hold, just postponing the COLA until January one. Okay, I need a motion?
I made the motion.
I got a motion, need a second? Got a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I got two, two opposed, three for. Okay. Thank you, we're good there. Now, all right, we've covered all that. Now what we need is the motion to approve the budget for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
So move to approve the budget as it's presented with the changes.
I've got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, I gotta call him.
Yes.
If we're voting for the budget as presented, don't that include the, what you say with changes?
Okay.
Yeah, that's what my motion was.
That's what he said.
Okay, then I'll vote against it.
Okay. All right, Jesse? Are you there?
I vote, yeah, I vote no on that.
Okay, so you're voting against the budget, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're gonna be calling the house.
All right. Three and two. Okay. All right, well...
And also, we need to vote on that. Last, I don't know what I was going back to saying, did it now?
Because the council, that's what council wanted to do. Majority, majority of council.
I guess we just keep talking about things over and over again.
Well, yep, we can. All right, well, that takes care of it. Thanks, sir.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. No.
All right.
Okay, now we're on item number eleven. Item number eleven is fourth quarter budget amendment. And that's enclosure number three. Am I right in that? All right, have I, have I accomplished everything I was supposed to accomplish as far as budget?
I think so. Right, do you see?
Okay, you have before you the budget amendments, uh, fourth quarter budget amendment, look at them. Has anyone got any comments on those at this time? Net increase and decreases all match up? Need a motion to approve?
So move.
Have a motion to approve budget amendments, fourth quarter. I have a second from Wendy. Uh, any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all in favor. Uh, next item is item number twelve, approval for the contract for the city auditor. Uh, that's our contract with, um, Anderson, Smith and White.
I'll make a motion that we not...
Okay, I've got a motion to accept this contract.
Second.
I have a second from Wendy. Any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise? Okay, thank you. Next item of business is enclosure number five, which is a resolution pertaining to the city of Hamlet fee schedule. Uh, I've looked it over, I hope that you all have had an opportunity to look it over. Uh, do we have any comments from staff on that?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor. The attorney may have a few comments, but some cities adopt a schedule of fees and what it does is it takes the fees that are collected by the city and it puts it all in one document. This will be really convenient for us throughout the year as something comes up, maybe once soccer season comes around and we have to look up in the minutes what the, instead of having to look up in the minutes the last time they were changed, we can look right here and, you know, see what the soccer registration fees are or whatever fees they are. It's also a good way for council to look at the, the fees that are collected by the city and maybe continually evaluate potential changes.
Yeah, I like this. I've had a lot of people ask me over the last while, you know, what certain fees worth for things, so...
I, I have a question about a rental on, on ball field or the gym or something. Insurance, how, how does, how's that handled? Are we the, are we covering them when they go rent the gym or...
No.
It says on here there that they're required to provide their own insurance.
Yeah, like for, when someone needs to, when someone wants to rent out the depot, we have a depot rental policy and one of the requirements of the rental agreement is that the renter must produce general liability insurance.
Is that something we, I guess not necessarily provide, but have someone available for them to get it or do they have, okay, you're shaking your head. Tammy's got you.
Now, you don't have that little note on the parks and recreational facilities rental?
They have it available, yes.
Okay. I got you.
But do we require it?
Yes.
What about the parks and recreations rental? You don't have it, you got it on depot rental, but you don't have it on, do they have their own insurance?
I can, I can check on that. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we require that or if we don't, we need to.
I know we require it, haven't we, Dave, in the past?
I, I don't, I don't know.
People that had softball or anything.
If you had a softball tournament, who's, who's...
They have to provide it, but that needs to be in there.
Is that something that we could require? Because inside, inside the facility, you're talking about fire and something like that. Outside, I mean, there's nothing to damage at our parks, is that something that...
They got liability issues.
Yeah, well, I'm getting to that. Is that something that we could have a waiver produced that could be signed?
And let me offer a couple of things. I think we may already have a waiver for sports. Uh, Mr. Manager, can you weigh in on that? We already have a waiver for sports participants.
Yes, when sports participants sign up for a sport, there is a liability waiver that indemnifies the city from liability.
But that's, that's city sports, that's not somebody renting the facility.
And, and on that, that's really the pleasure of the board. I mean, you can require insurance for anything. I know when you have sports leagues, sometimes the nonprofit entity doesn't really even have the funds to, to pay the insurance and you just have insurance on individual players like we talked about earlier this year. But if you're talking about facility rentals, you can. Um, the thing to be aware of though is, is you, you may just want to look at the cost before you just blanket require it, because you may say if you just have folks that are coming in for a picnic, that, that additional cost is really, uh, more than you want to charge. So I'd say it's something you certainly can't require, but might be something to look at.
The point I was trying to, to make is, is we're talking about ball fields, I mean, like I have a travel team. We don't use city fields, but if we did, I mean, we have to be a part of the team. We're in a club and the club requires, or they cover you. We, they, you know, part of their registration fees covers insurance, so they're insured.
Doesn't it put you in a different light if they were up, if you were up practicing on our field and you're not paying for it and renting? Yeah, it's sort of a different liability kind of situation. I'm just...
That's what I was saying.
I mean, when Mr. Ingram had his fun day up there and you got bouncy houses and things like that, you know, they had a lot of problems. I'm, I'm just, I'm asking the question, do you, do, do, do you...
Well, as a city attorney, I always like to see everybody sign waivers and everybody have insurance for everything, so, and I'm being a little flippant about that, but I, I think it's wise to have. I think it is worth looking at individual facilities rather than trying to have a blanket policy, because you'll find that different costs, uh, some, some kinds of insurance could be better fits for different kinds of facilities.
I mean, I, I don't want to block any programs and God forbid, we don't have enough in Richmond County because people can't afford it, so I don't want to charge anybody anything. But the waiver idea, I think is really good. If you're gonna use it, it should be a waiver and it covers everything.
But, I mean, you couldn't get, to me, the person renting the, the gym couldn't sign a waiver for Billy coming in playing ball. And it, to me, he can't, he can't sign it for, I wouldn't think, for somebody else.
You, you mean if like, I'm just making up an example, like you have a church league that rents a gym or something and then people come in and play in pickup?
And the president of the church league signs the waiver.
No, no, I'm talking about individuals, air issue require every individual involved to have a waiver. If they don't...
That's a, that's a paperwork nightmare too, yeah.
Well, I mean, as long as you have the representative of the club or team, like, you know, I don't think it's something the city should have to do. You shouldn't have twenty people off of teams coming in here.
And I was gonna say, I mean respectfully, I think if you have just a single sheet waiver and you have like a pickup league or something, you just say you're renting it, whoever's running it that day just hands them out, they sign it and then hand it back to the city, so I don't think that's a big paperwork burden.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we use, it covers, it, it has, you know, fifteen lines on it, fifteen people sign it, just once you...
That works, yeah, I don't know.
That's what we use.
I will make one comment. Uh, under parks and recreational facilities rental fees, Tammy, can you bring that part of it up? Marcus?
Yes, sir.
Under where you have parks and recreational facilities rental fees, bring that up. Right below, whoa, right below where it says, uh, yeah, right below where it says, uh, sponsorship, you've got to have a split in there somewhere because below that is not rental fees, that's fees to participate. That's participant fees. After you leave sponsorship, that's not facilities rental fees. You see what I'm saying? Below, below sponsorships now.
Okay.
Sponsorship meaning that you sponsor that?
That's right. That's really by, out separate from all of it.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Just over participant, just have a molded area that says participant fees.
So you should have participant fees underneath that sponsorship.
You know, you need to move sponsorships. There we go.
There you go. That look good?
Perfect.
I don't know where sponsorships would go because it really isn't under rental rates.
Kind of in some ways it is, you rent the thing for a year.
Kind of by itself.
There you go. That's good.
There you go. Is everybody good with fees and all? Is there any?
Wasn't there, wasn't there a fee we had to put in for?
Yeah, you said something about tapping fee for?
Yes, council, one thing that, um, you should consider is, um, setting a fire hydrant tampering fee.
How many people have we called tampering with it?
In asking staff, they don't know of a time when we ever did. You know, it would be very rare.
He's called several contracts.
During the drought, we called several and also, um, I called one that was, they thought they were hooked to a family, they had written permission from the family and they tied in one about it. Once I told them, I mean, they came up and paid for the water that they had gotten, but it was actually a water tankering company. And they had one of the big seven thousand gallon tanks. But, really, it's hard to say how many kids.
And if you catch them, you call.
I'm only thought of police department, uh, they have come up here, paid, paid fines, paid for water, whatever.
Would there be more fines on top of that, Scott? Like if you went up there? Do you charge anything?
I think that would count that for.
Okay.
It'd be larson, that's city property. It'd be larson, that's city property.
So this might occur maybe once a year or once every few years, but, um.
And that's on top of whatever amount of water you find out that they probably use the charging for, right? Council, what are your wishes on this, uh, fee schedule?
Move to approve.
I got a motion?
I'll second it. He, he, he made a motion to approve.
I know. I was looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, I got a second. Uh, any further comment on it? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item, item number six, is, uh, tax releases and refunds. Got an opportunity to look it over.
I didn't see any issues. Would it move to approve?
I got a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Likewise. Okay, also at this time, uh, it has come to our attention that it's time to reappoint or appoint the, uh, city representative to the Hamlet ABC Board, which expires on June the twelfth. Council will need to do a reappointment to a new two-year term.
I move to appoint, uh, Ms. Councilwoman Wendy Massey if she is willing to accept it.
Okay, I got a motion? Eddie, second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Likewise. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next item of business, which is kind of a pleasure for all of us, is a consideration for temporary event street closure. On any of our streets that we may close for events during the year, if they are on state highway, uh, right of way, we do have to pass an ordinance by the city council for these various, uh, events and let them know when it's going to be and what have you, and that's basically what we have to do. If you look at the wall up here, we do have Fourth of July event. We've got a Hamlet Library Family Fun Day. Uh, we have the Seaboard Festival. And we have the Christmas, Hamlet Christmas Parade and the Old Fashioned Christmas. And that's what we've got on our, on our list at this time. Also, uh, what happened? That's gotten on the two pages. Aren't Old Fashioned Christmas? I need a motion to approve this ordinance?
Um,
Yes.
Before, um,
Okay.
For Marcus, without going in any depth, was there a miscommunication with the last event of the street closure?
Miscommunication, old, I mean. Old Fashioned Christmas?
No.
Yard sale.
Yard sale.
We passed a separate.
Yeah, that was a one-time.
Yeah, it was a one-time.
Was there a miscommunication?
Was there a miscommunication with a business that complained down there because they weren't notified?
Oh, yes, um.
We were told that they were notified.
That's correct.
They were not.
That's correct.
That was the organizer of the event?
Yes, sir.
Told us that.
Yes.
They had been contacted.
Yes, in an email, we were told, which I, I believe I forwarded that to you guys, but we were told that the, the business owners had be, had been contacted and, and most of the business owners were, uh, participating.
Find out any further on that? From the organizer?
Um, I spoke with, uh, uh, the person who submitted the complaint and I also spoke with the organizer and from what I could gather, it, it sounded like maybe there was some miscommunication between the organizer and the business owner. And, um, maybe at one time, the HPDA was wanting to close one side of the street. And once I heard that request, I reached out to DOT and I, and I heard from DOT that they did not recommend that we do that because it prov, it presents quite a bit of danger. Having, you know, vendors set up on one side of the street and then moving traffic on another. So I passed that on to, um, the HPDA and let them know that if we're going, if, if we're going to close the street, it's got to be closed in both lanes because DOT doesn't want that done and I, I, you know, I don't want to present, um, any kind of, um, risk to the, you know, to the, to the event, especially when it comes to safety. And so, once we made that change to decide to close the street in it, in its entirety, I don't think that that was communicated thereafter to the business owners. Especially to the, the ones who were concerned about the street closures.
So, um, before I make the motion to this, this is going to be on our city website. This is going to be given to all the business owners and all of that, so that everyone's aware.
We can find out a way to notify the property owners.
That's good.
Alright, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, I would, um, I got a motion to approve. You got a second?
Second.
I have a second. Um, I guess my only comment is if we have something like HPDA that does something sporadic, we need to know at least a month ahead of time so we can pass a ordinance on it, right?
At least a month ahead of time.
Alright, any other comments on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Likewise. Okay, next item of business is consideration of resolution twenty sixteen oh seven, Civil Penalty Penalties Guidelines and, uh, as requested by the city council, policy addresses situations wherein a fine removal for civil penalties may be applicable. Action, if the policy is acceptable by the council vote, will be needed to adopt same. I think in the past, we didn't have anything down on paper about this. Am I correct?
Mr. Mayor? And also, this is from an earlier discussion council had where there was consensus that for fairly small amounts of money, that could be addressed at the staff level. Larger amounts you wanted to bring to council. So that's what this is in response to.
Give you all a minute to look it over if you.
I, I think I ought to up the amount a little bit, let Marcus make the decision to.
Is that?
Five hundred or a thousand, five hundred or a thousand or something.
Fine with that.
You want to make it a thousand?
I'll say a thousand.
Thousand, okay, we'll make that note. Did you copy that, Tam?
You have a problem with that, Mark?
No, sir, it's up to the pleasure of the board.
Well.
I think it'd help, help staff. You and staff.
I have a motion to approve with the, with the change to give the city manager a thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Oh, I haven't had to.
Oh, I thought he made.
You might want to clarify.
He made the motion.
You, you said, give him a thousand dollars.
Well, yeah. You may want to.
With the amendment. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion from you?
I'll make a motion.
I got the motion.
With the thousand dollars.
I, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Likewise. Thank you.
Keep on, we'll have a minute to know.
Uh, at this time, we will, uh, we will move into the, uh, departmental reports and we'll start with the fire chief.
Um, Mayor, Council, we are currently in the middle of working on some old fire trucks and getting ready. Um, it's been a busy time for us to call the fire department. Several fires and unfortunately, some shootings in our community. We're actually involved in a search of a few neighborhoods this past week. It's been a busy time, by TV and S-Bus. Along with, um, good teachers, people who've been likely. But we just, so, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Move along, police chief.
Thinking back off what the Fox has said, we, we, we considered that helping us, um, shootings that we had, that I figured was back to back and it was a couple of businesses were crawling. And that's a tech involved, both the big business side, uh, control, um, some armed robberies. But our, our tech division is kind of stressed right now. We've lost some scene, we've played all the evidence and we got to come back and we got to get it sorted, we got to feed it and we put it evidence. So we're doing a little hard, men and women on the street too, separating the areas. We found us going out with help, with L E's and outside E two two, going in and helping, so, um, trying to combat drugs and gangs. I just want everybody to be safe.
We commend you for the work y'all, yeah, we commend y'all for the work you've done over in the last month or so and, uh, the guys are having a real good success rate on solving this stuff and y'all were right on top of shootings. And, uh, that's just, that's great. I mean, that's, you know, considering how small our tech division is. Everybody's in there working together. I feel appreciated.
Thank you. We can see a lot of code, you know, stopping by, Noble Land Medal one seventy seven, Saturday, um, twelve six. There's other Mike pastors from the churches came and I stopped by and did it and we had a couple of law cut offs that come out to, they had a cookouts and drop the music. Their brother was murdered two thousand and eleven, he was beaten on bed, he was beaten up in Washington. He was very passionate about me, he was my, my, my uncle, uncle, we built this, kept him near my village twenty two years ago. So, um, telling the family, we're close to him. I think that happened, it's a tragedy. And he wants to rent bonds in our city and he wants to send messages to people doing, you know, my father. And that's all, whatever you gotta do, combat the world, or gangs, whatever they do.
And we encourage all citizens, if they see anything that looks suspicious, call the police department.
Absolutely.
And, uh, that, that's the biggest thing, you know, you got to have the eyes and ears out there. Police can't do everything. They've got to have some help.
Washington Avenue, is that one runs parallel with Monroe Avenue?
It runs perpendicular.
Across Memorial Park.
Okay.
Across the four apartments, you know, we're working. First, they're trying to protect people with the cameras up. They got on foot, boots on the ground in that, in that area. That's where one of the business stole in that, there was shootings all daylight. Shooting one another, we had one person out, the rounds, it was probably five or six. Just, uh, that's the right to get on that building, we got stolen junk from the old beach and, uh, just nail rounds on it. And it shows what shell decks and what up. So, um, we've been very, very active over there.
Keep a special eye on that corner lot there on between one seventy seven and that Monroe Avenue. Right across from the store, a lot of activity and traffic. City manager's already aware of it, we're working on it.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Appreciate that for the court, no doubt. Billy, what you got for us tonight, anything? Gerald, you got anything for us tonight? Okay, we're certainly glad to have you with us. Uh, Robert Brown?
Uh, I'd like to add one thing to, uh, Tommy, uh, being here was, that's thanks to my guys. And Gerald being, you know, previous, uh, he knows what goes into all this and, um, my guys do a, do a great job and that's thanks to them. And also, uh, as the city manager mentioned, uh, I lost Gerald to doing something he loves to do and you can tell it. Um, I'm glad, I'm happy for him and, uh, so in saying that, I'm looking for an employer. I've got some applications, but if anybody's out there listening, please come by city hall and get an application. It's a good job to have and I'll be more than happy to take a look at it.
With good benefits.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, Stephanie, anything else for us tonight?
Um, not yet, but I hope to next time.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. We're glad to have you with us. Jill? Uh, Tammy? Attorney?
No, sir.
Okay, city manager, ref your report.
Mayor and council, I, I just want to thank several of you for, um, coming out to the cookout that we had this weekend. We had a, a small cookout for about thirty employees. I accidentally scheduled the date on the same date as one of our other employees got married. Congratulations to Chuck Heaton. I got the heat in, at the May meeting, um, so I'm gonna, uh, pass it on to him. Welcome to married life, married, welcome to married life. So, um, I, I just wanted to thank you guys for coming and, and supporting us, um. I like to do small events like that for employees, you know, and a cookout with family members. It was, it was a nice time, even though, um, we only had about thirty-five or forty employees there. It was still nice.
Maybe we'd do it again.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not bad.
Maybe when it's not so hot, maybe in March, March or April.
Especially when some of us were standing over cookers.
Yeah, yeah, and we couldn't all fit in the session stand.
Did you know how fast he ran when you and I got there?
Yeah, he, he went under the shade real quick.
I know how to put you guys to work.
Maurice for helping us too. That was great. That was good. Okay, at this, at this time, we'll move along to, uh,
That's, um,
Oh, you weren't done yet.
I just wanted to, um, give one remind, one or two reminders that city offices will be closed Monday, July fourth for the Fourth of July. We are having a great event this year with, uh, improved fireworks as well as family fun activities from five thirty to eight thirty and the fireworks start at nine thirty. We're gonna have patriotic music leading into the fireworks and maybe a, a short, um, uh, program in honor of our veterans. So please come out, bring the family and bring a towel and play in the, the super soaker.
Five thirty to eight thirty, is that right?
Yes, sir, on Monday, July fourth. And I also wanted to, um, present a reminder for the baseball tournament that we're having this weekend, Friday through Monday. It's an all-star tournament, so that's all I had to report.
Anybody got questions for the manager?
Um, will you, uh, I, I'm just brief, because a lot of people don't know about the all-star tournament that we were selected. Mark?
Yes, sir.
The all-star tournament, I mean, just kind of, a lot of people don't know it that.
Yep. We were selected by, uh, I believe it was, uh, Babe Ruth. Yep, to be the host for an all-stars tournament. And, uh, we're hosting the seven and eight-year-old league. And this is separate from our regular baseball season. There's only three hosts for this tournament and we are one of them. And it should bring, um, quite a few people to the city from out of town and, uh, it's something really to be proud of.
Maurice said there'd be eighteen.
Did I say Babe Ruth? I'm sorry.
No, you, you, it's, it's, it's under Babe Ruth, Cal Ripken's under Babe Ruth, but it's all. Cal's gotta make some money. Cal's gotta make some money.
Gotta give credit.
Okay, at this point, we'll move along to item number twenty, which is comments counts on, uh, tonight, I believe I'll start with Mr. Martin. Ms. Massey?
I just want to commend the fire department, um, I had the opportunity to watch them in action, um, recently, and was amazed at the dedication, amazed at the hard work, watched them all go above and beyond to try to save as much personal belongings for the family as possible, and watch these guys work until they could hardly stand up, I mean, they were just getting wiped out, the humidity was bad, it was hot, um, and they were just absolutely amazing, I commend them for that. That's it.
Mr. Lindsay?
I'll thank Mr. Martin and, uh, Marcus for their help on the July fourth, Mr. Martin's putting, I believe, a lot of time into, working with the group down there to get it going, and pushing, I mean, I should give you a phone call, uh, our playground, Marcus, I believe, should be open, hopefully, uh, usable here in a week or two, maybe?
Yes, sir, the, yes, sir, the, the playground installation company is trying to finish up this week, and we were originally trying to finish the whole thing up this week, but we may dip into next week, um, a, as we finish up in, installing the safety surfacing, and, and we got that on a grant from the Cole Foundation, and I'm really appreciative, um, of, of their support for our city, um, it's gonna be a, a great playground.
Uh, probably won't be on the air, but remember it's Father's Day Sunday, for everybody, for, for, present or past, if they're not here with us, um, AMP, I guess the bids will go out soon?
Yes, sir, with, with the adoption of the budget ordinance, uh, staff has already put together, um, a bid to go out, and we can put that out in the coming days, uh, and, uh, hopefully, uh, the goal is to have that demolished long before the Seaboard Festival, so-
Just for the history buffs, the AMP opened August the fourth of nineteen sixty-four, just tidbit, I'll scratch that one off and move on, um, in the, in the, the bad news part, uh, I guess, some people might think it's good, my wife and I are closing Vector Church.
Oh, goodness.
We have ceased taking orders, and we were shut down, hopefully, within a week, or two weeks, and, and, uh, maybe somebody new there, I hope, coming up, some other new business, that we are closing our business, and retiring, it's a new chapter in our life, and that whole corner's changing, uh, Dibs Place across the street, Secondhand Stores, closing the end of the month, and the Big Apple is closing across the street from us also, maybe it's us, I don't know yet, but, that whole corner's gonna be shut down, and hopefully, we'll find new people to come in and do businesses, and, with your local business, but, that's all I got, remember Father's Day.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay.
On positive note, I got the last two shirts made at Vector Church.
No, you didn't.
I think I did, she told me this.
Okay.
Um, I don't really have anything to add, uh, other than I hope everyone has a happy and safe July fourth holiday, uh, we were supposed to go on vacation, but I think we're gonna hang tight and wait until the fifth to, uh, to leave, so we can be a part of it, um, that's the plans right now, um, this past year, you know, we had a good year, we were able to take some money that we had left over, and take care of, uh, our people, and get some things they need, that we kind of told them, just hang on tight, and we'll look at it, and we were able to do it, so, um, several of our departments got some things that they dearly needed, and I hope that with this budget we just passed, we can do the same thing, and, uh, and just continue to, to grow, I, I kind of liked how we did last year, where we looked at mid-year items, and we didn't jump into everything at once, so we weren't necessarily committed to it, so, um, I think that, that'd be really good for everyone involved, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, again, I want to, same as Wendy, I want to commend the fire department, the work they did over there on McDonnell Avenue, if anybody hadn't really heard about it, uh, Mercer's House over there on McDonnell Avenue, the hit, I liked, I mean, a solid hit, and, uh, set the house on fire just instantly, and, uh, the fire department got there as fast as they could, but the time they got there, it was rolling out, it was really bloody, got an excellent knockdown on it, uh, it was hot, it was humid, and, uh, it's just, uh, y'all just did a great job on it, beat them in, and we had several houses around there, we had to check, they got residual, uh, lightning, but they weren't really hurt, just knocked out some circuit breakers, I'd also like to, uh, thank Ms. Massey for bringing drinks down there.
Y'all needed them.
That was great, that was wonderful, thank you for thinking of that, look forward to seeing everybody on Fourth of July, uh, we're gonna have a good time down there, and, uh, hopefully, the weather will get along with us, uh, we're gonna have a little bit extra fireworks that they owed us from last year, if I'm correct, so that's gonna make the fireworks show a little better, so, we're glad to see that, uh, Billy Stubbs people, I appreciate what the street crews are doing, and the garbage people, I've not had any complaints, everything looks good, uh, they're out there working every day, and we appreciate what you're doing down there, and again, Robert, congratulations on our award, uh, you've worked hard on that every year, and it's just, it, you know, you just go along, do your thing, and we're, this stuff's getting done, so you've got good people, and we're proud of our water, uh, we occasionally had a little problem, but you've always worked it out, and we appreciate that, and, uh, Jill, we appreciate the work you've done on the budget, and, uh, Tammy, Marcus, so, uh, thank you all so much, and, uh, I think that's about all I've got tonight, and, uh, at this time, I would ask, uh, for a motion to go into closed session for North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three, one, uh, three eighteen point eleven, eight, three, five, and seven, for attorney-client privilege personnel, and to hear reports concerning investigation of alleged criminal misconduct.
So, move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we will be going into closed session. At this time, we're back in session from a closed session, and, uh, during, during the closed session, we, uh, the only thing that we did was approve an easement to, uh, P E D Electric to install some, uh, electric lines on some of our right-of-way down on, uh, Dusty Trail, and, uh, that's the only thing we took care of in that, and at this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Got a motion? Got a second from Mr. Martin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned.